Good morning, everyone. We'll call this meeting of the A S D School Board Governance Committee to order. Today is February thirtieth, twenty twenty five at eleven oh two in our boardroom. Present physically in the room is myself, member Jacobs. Sullivan online, can you read us the members who are present?
Yes, absolutely. We have a member Wilson, President Holloman, member Bellamy, and member Lessons.
Great. And then member Higgins just joined us here in the room. For our record, can we ask our staff to introduce themselves to Mr. Lang on my left?
Sure, Marty Lang, Chief of H R.
Chair Brian Superintendent.
Sven Gass, Chief Captain and Officer.
Kieran, Executive Assistant, America Sullivan, Executive Assistant.
Cory A S B, President.
Mr. East, all right. Are there anyone else on line needs to introduce Sullivan before we get going?
No, that isn't.
Great, okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mike Kepstein is on as well.
Great, okay. Welcome all. We'll get started straight to our agenda. B one is a policy review. This is a rotating triennial policy review that is starting at BP forty twenty. Sullivan, if you are able to bring up the first policy that's listed there, we can go through the committee. Look for any changes or anything we need to flag for future review, and if there are no changes, we'll consider those reviewed.
Now, just this one wasn't here because there was some update that we had done that A S B was still work on posting, and so I brought it back this time around.
Great, okay. So does this reflect the current version or the A S B version?
It's the current version.
Okay. And do we have the A S B versus administration interested in having us review that as a committee today or is it something we're doing later? Just to make sure I'm tracking. So we have an A S B version supposed to replace this, am I tracking that right?
No, I'm sorry, this was supposed to be in our last meeting, but it it's on this list because we had made some changes a little while ago, so this was just reflective of those changes.
Okay, so this has the changes included?
Yes, so I think that unless there's anything new, I think we could just go ahead with the with the on the next one.
Tracking, okay. Yeah, so we just went to this one, okay. Thank you for clearing my confusion. Are any any comments from board members on the relatively recently updated BP forty twenty? Okay, hearing seeing this, this all will go into our next policy. Any board members have a question, suggested change on BP forty one eleven, Certified Personnel Recruitment Selections?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Member Bellamy.
Thank you. I don't have a change, but I was wondering if the administration had any concerns or 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 comments that they wanted to make.
Happy to respond to that, member Bellamy. I think from the administration's standpoint, all of these components are important in our recruitment selection process. We have something that addresses them in our principal hiring handbook, and this is something that we routinely insert this newer administrators on and remind folks of annually as we go through the staffing process. So I feel like this is an important policy and that we've got pretty well established in our administrative practices.
Great, thank you. Um, any other questions, member Bellamy, are you good to go?
I'm good, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, uh, Mr. East.
Is this you?
Um, so this is our other books. Yeah, this is just a rotating policy review. I guess B and Council of Grace is suggest we review these recently. We just happen to have a relatively new, I think they updated more policy on our list as well. Thank you for the clarification question. We'll move on to our next item, BP four eleven dot two. Yeah, perfect. Four eleven dot two, forty two eleven dot two, forty three eleven dot two, legal statute.
Uh, during Joe, may I just offer a housekeeping suggestion?
Yeah.
The these policies that have three separate numbers that occurred when we went through our the process to change from our old policy book into the new one. Um, the old policy book had um, certified classified and business personnel policy separated out. So there was a lot of redundancy. The ones that have three numbers were actually listed three times separately. And I was, I I think that that was the um, committee's way of kind of navigating that, but I don't think that three numbers are needed. I think we could just do a housekeeping. America could reach out to A S B and have them just take them back to that first number.
Okay. And so is I'm just curious, do we know if this is what the A S B template manual reflects?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, so I don't I don't even know would that require or go before just updating?
I think it's just how, for me, I would think it's just housekeeping. We're just fixing duplicate numbering.
Yeah.
Mr. Lang. And Ms. Grant approached me to just to kind of get my thoughts on this, and I think this really was uh, something we did as a bridge when we're moving from one set of policies to the other so that people could completely um, track with the transition in the way that we were doing business, but most of these were duplicated across all three. They are umbrella policies that are meant to capture all employees. And I agree that the numbering system, the way it is currently, this is just now a point of confusion for folks.
Sure. Um, President Holloman, do you have any objection to allowing staff to update the number of this board policy without changing any content to avoid confusion?
I have no objection to that.
Great, okay. Um, are there any other board members who have a question or clarification or request of revision to this board policy? I'm ready.
And I appreciate, I want to give the flexibility of changing the numbers, but I like the idea that when you do it to get update the board so that we go look for things or we make reference to it in some other policy that we know that it's changed, that would be beneficial.
In this case, we, I think we just updated the majority of the board, and is this sufficient for your purpose?
I think the Governance Committee has a right to be able to, you know, waive it, I think. It just gives us an opportunity to do that. It could go outward announcement, but I don't think it's really necessary, but I do see we're getting an update that way. We did have a question how it was still ambered, it could be resolved. Some people may see an issue and I don't, I'd exceed that.
For our purposes, um, hearing from our chair and hearing a lack of concern, and then hearing member Higgins' request has been accommodated, I think we're good to go. Um, hearing no other comments or requested changes to this board policy, we'll move on to forty one twelve dot one, Certified Personnel Contracts. Some just to read that. Any questions or suggested changes to forty one twelve dot one, Certified Personnel Contracts, Mr. Lang, Mr. East?
All right, you say? The I think it probably is. Uh, this policy as written is not the way that we have done business in the district for decades. I believe this was brought over from the A A S B book and just was probably overlooked in the transition. But we don't on an annual basis reissue contracts for employees and have them resign for the next year. We have uh, essentially what are continuing contracts unless we notify individuals of an intent to not retain them at the end of their contract or um, lay them off, or if they've notified us that they are resigning from the district. I think for smaller districts, this is the common practice in the state of Alaska. They actually have folks sign a contract and make a commitment for the following year. But for larger districts, um, I don't think that this is the practice. Um, and I mean, I've been in this for twenty six years, the only contract I've ever signed was the one in nineteen, fall ninety nine, I joined the district. And so um, I would request maybe permission of the committee to uh, draft something that captures our longstanding practice so that there's alignment between what's in the policy book and what's in practice.
All right, Mr. East, I'm going to remember Higgins. Any additional comments, Mr. East, or do? Mr. Lang, Captain.
Marty said it well.
Perfect, sorry, Mr. Higgins, anything else?
Yeah, it it goes back to a bigger broader issue. When we got policies that weren't being followed or because they need to be changed, it needs to come to the board because I do believe what has made a decision with policies that you must do this or you can't do this. And sometimes I know we've gotten from this not current, this is a bit about too long. Where where they give, well, we don't need to change that because we don't follow it anyway. I mean, that's both uh, from administration, and we really don't want a policy manual that that, you know, dismissive. Uh, and if we're writing a policy, policy is is a firm statement, what must be done and must not be done, how? Um, then I just would like it put back to the board rather than the administration deciding to alter it without bringing it to the board. And that's a good example, it's a long time before you, I understand it's been out there, but it's just, it's a good thing to make the changes.
Mr. Sullivan, is there a revision date on that? When was the last time we looked at the? Towards the bottom, maybe?
And I I think Ms. Jane was, who was talking about bringing a revision forward to the Governance Committee, and then my policy, policy has to have two readings to be changed.
I know.
Yeah.
Well, and I just want to flag member Higgins, I think what your your comments are fair, I think that that in part is why we are responsible as a board for looking at these every three years is to make sure we're in alignment, what things that are here makes sense. And so I think that's exactly what we're doing right now is the remedy for which you're alluding to. We looks like haven't reviewed this policy. Um, so at least this board hasn't reviewed this policy because the last revision was twenty twenty. So this is our first look at it. Um, it sounds like administration's going to provide an update. I guess the only question I would have is we can update this if we'd like. If we have a process that works, that A D A is certainly monitoring. And I would imagine other um, Certified Personnel would be as well. Do does there need to be a board policy about it, or is contractual language the better place for it?
The question is, do we need this policy? I know this says that every contract's got to be signed by two school board members, we're not doing it. We're not, so does this policy have any value?
I don't know, yeah, I want to just ask.
If not, then let's eliminate the policy.
Mr. East.
I would, obviously, his legacy language, right, to some past. So I think what Marty proposed is probably the best way of saying he, I'm sure Marty will capture, if he wants consultation with me, absolutely, but capture not only the current practice, but potentially how the district function moving forward. So it does capture future, you know, changes based on the electronic, the electronic format.
Mr. Higgins.
I guess my question is, is this a situation where we're trying to do a policy on administrative practice? Or is it something where we have an interest in putting restrictions on how it must be done? I that's, if it is, it's just an administrative process, then do we need a policy?
I'm gonna take that, not as rhetorical. So in my, not having thought through this, not looked at this beforehand, but just off the cuff, my thought is teachers need a statement from the district that they are employed so they, to recertify, to share with other school districts, just to change in jobs. So there does probably need to be a policy that states that district will provide that information and then let the district provide it.
Ms. Jane. And and we do provide that. I mean, it's available under District Connect for every employee, they can go see their salary statement, which effectively is their contract for the year. So like I decided to recertify with the state for my administrative certificate. They asked for a contract. We just upload that document and the state accepts it. So I didn't realize there was this disconnect with the policy that we adopted from A A S B. So this review process works, right? We're catching things that are inconsistent. And so, yeah, I I would propose, I don't have anything today on paper, I haven't really contemplated what would be policy versus A R. But I'm happy to go and sort of do that thought experiment and then bring something back to this committee for consideration and input.
Okay, sounds good. So yeah, um, it sounds like administration's gonna bring forward a revision or um, another recommendation as to how to move forward. And I think member Higgins' comments are well taken, and I would second them, which is if there are policies as we're conducting this review that may not need to be here based on our practice and the fact that the A S B policy manual tries to capture, um, you know, more than best practices for more than fifty school districts. And A S D is unique in many ways, please feel free to make those suggestions going forward as well. Any other comments or suggestions or questions on this board policy before we move on?
Um, just clarification, is there a certain date that you bring this back, or would you like to just work on it and let me know?
Um, I will try to get something um, on the books for for March or April.
March or April, great, thank you.
Why don't we plan for, Ms. Sullivan, we plan for April, just to be safe. And we've got a date cert. All right, we'll move on then to BP forty one twelve dot four, forty two twelve dot four, and forty three twelve dot four. Ms. Grant, our suggestion to rename or renumber this, stay consistent for this one, too.
I think all of them that have the three numbers should be just cleaned up that way.
All right, perfect. Aside from the numbering change, then, are there any other recommended changes or questions about this board policy?
Mr. East. Is this limited to employees or is this applicable to applicants? So we're talking about both. You do it for employees, maybe, why, but you use applicants, wait, let it says, oh, you know, I'm just wondering why only with current employees. We got different to apply to employees, but not that. It seems kind of odd.
Give an answer from a regular question. I might have to do a little bit of follow up on that because we do in some of our job functions that require a lot of manual labor, require a fitness for duty, um, health examination, right, to show that somebody has the basic level of fitness in order to be able to perform the job. But I don't know where that happens in the workflow. So I think they apply, this might what I need to fact check. I think they apply, once they're selected, then it's conditional on them being able to pass that examination, and then they get their in permanent employment with the district. But this also leaves open the much more rare circumstance where if we have an employee was out because of injury or a mental health concern, we can require a fitness to return examination. Um, so I think it it probably works functionally on both of those scenarios.
Do you get a pre-employment questionnaire filled out that for all? That, um, you know, have you had this, do you have that? Do you have anything like that that you do without going to a doctor, but you get this? Because then it makes a difference on your liability for workers comp, it makes a difference on other issues, but you get a statement from them at all?
I believe there's a something in the job description about, you know, this, the hero, the the requirements to perform the job.
Yeah.
Can you do it? And there's some attestation to that. And generally in our application process, I don't know if there's a more thorough quite set of questions for those jobs like maintenance and operations and transportation where there is a much more pronounced physical component to the job. Um, I'd have to, I'd have to run that down. I'm not familiar with that specifically.
Because of liability at workers comp, when you have a pre-existing condition, it makes a difference. So you got the certain information front, then you have, and it makes a difference. And that's considered to be a physical examination, even when you're not doing it physically. You gather medical information, they're gonna put it in that category, that's what I've been doing. So, because that's very important, because you can't gather that information until a job office made, otherwise you violate A D A. Um, so, um, uh, it could be flushed out a little bit about applicants versus employees, it's one of this is a uh, if you're doing something like that, if you want, if you want to consider it, but there was some financial advantages, and if you do have somebody who has a medical condition, even a teacher, you may want to know certain medical conditions or exposures or whatever you got that you may bring into the classroom.
Uh, Mr. Lang, is this something you'd like to address with the board and board connect? Or do you think you have enough here to review for a change and bring this back in April at all?
Um.
Yeah. I don't know that there have been any issues that have surfaced around this particular board policy. I could run the ground some of the questions that member Higgins has, and if I think there is any conflict, then I'd be happy to bring back some proposed revisions.
Great, so the the plan is for them to consider this review, and then, uh, Mr. Lang, you'll are you gonna be following up with any information, response to the brigands' questions, to be clear? Or if there's no, no need and we're good to go, that this will be the end of it, is that fair?
Yeah.
Unless there's something, great. Understood. Okay, um, seeing no other questions regarding this board policy, we'll be renumbered, and then, um, we can move on to the next, I think, last one, which is forty one twelve dot five, forty one, forty two, twelve dot five, forty, forty three, twelve dot five. All Personnel Security Check, we'll renumber this one as well, clarity. Are there any other questions or recommended changes to this board policy? Mr. East.
What does effort will be made to investigate, what does that mean? Uh, are you, are you, um? I I that's, it is time waiting to me.
It's not effort, it's done, yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not a choice. That sounds like a choice.
That sounds like a choice and discretionary what effort constitutes. Um, so are we calling prior employers? Are we calling, uh, we're doing? But maybe, you know, if we're gonna do something like that, it is be specific, it's even more clear about what we're doing rather than effort.
Sounds like maybe another case where this template board policy isn't in line with current practice, Mr. Lang.
A little bit more descriptive.
Are you interested in changing it to reflect current practice, which I think includes a background check through these?
All right, I I'm confident in our process as it exists. Um, I don't know, I mean, the little bit of uncertainty in the language there certainly hasn't hindered our commitment to making sure that we're doing a sound criminal background check on anybody that we're employing in the district, especially those who would have any access to kids. Um, if it's the interest of the board to, you know, tighten up the language, I got no concern there because I think we are tight practice.
I've only real one issue came out, and and it was because you were limited backwell check to seven years and nothing more. And then some history out there, which was pretty, I mean, including fatalities, but it's a lot bad, so.
If if we, so remember, if we change this, and Mr. Lang, if we change this to the administration shall, instead of effort will be made to, the administration shall investigate the background of applicants, I mean, does the rest of that track? Or is there some more of this, more significant revision required? So I think it stands to reason we should reflect current practice on this board policy.
And when we're hiring somebody, that probably can be different to somebody long term, they need them yesterday, and you got a crisis going on, it's all on that issue. So it's appropriate investigation will be conducted, something like that. Uh, because, you know, if you're having somebody to you know, some removal, if you got a crisis, shut the place down, I don't know what the difference would be. But I've, that would be, I'm not, that, it's just a wing of it. So usually you're saying appropriate investigation, or the administration will conduct an appropriate investigation into the background of our prior hire. Maybe just, that may be mean enough, at least it, it leaves it, it is discretionary, I don't think you have.
That third sentence, um, is what we do.
Yeah.
The second sentence in that first paragraph is a little unclear to me what exactly it's pointing to.
Yeah.
And so, Mr. Lang, would you raise your preference to have the board clarify language in line with the suggestion made by member Higgins? Um, or would you prefer to take this back and bring our cleanup language to us in April? Either one's fine with with me. I think it's really just a matter of clearing up the second sentence to avoid any uncertainty.
I don't have any uh, personal need to change anything in the policy, but it's important, like to tighten up the language, it's the, it's the board's language, so.
Okay. So I'll work with Mr. Higgins, we'll get a quick change, um, get this to President Holloman for adoption, recognizing that the intent isn't to change current practice and just to clarify the second sentence. Ms. Sullivan, I don't think this is something the committee will need to vote on. And so if we could just flag this as a follow-up item to send to President Holloman, that would be very helpful. Although, if there's any board members who object, taking that path forward, please, that would be a good time to state some. Okay, great. Um, so that takes care of our rotating triennial policy review. Um, we'll move to B two, our next agenda item, which is forty one twenty, Adult Student Boundaries. This has been carried over from the previous meeting, and I see a amended version, uh, version six attached to our agenda. And I think this is administration's item, is that accurate?
Yeah, this was one, I can speak to it. Um, that originally was in our policy book prior to the adoption of the A A S B policies. Um, it, A A S B did not have one specifically speaking to adult student boundaries, so Matt Tiefert um, feeling like it was important to have this in our policies, um, started a draft, and I think has worked worked with the Governance Committee, starting maybe back in twenty two. Um, this is version six, so it's gone through a lot of consideration, um, with the Governance Committee. Uh, we last had it on the agenda in September. Um, member Lessons and member Holloman both had some suggested edits, um, mostly about midway down the page. Um, uh, member Lessons had requested just moving some sentences around so that they were grouped more appropriately. Um, that, uh, those edits, those changes have been made under pre-existing outside relationships with students. Um, just noting that for purpose of consideration, that that section is really designed to call out the fact that we know that people have pre-existing social relationships with students they're gonna interact with professionally. Um, the important thing is probably in that second paragraph that if that were ever to be, um, something that can be concerning, that they notify their building administrator of that, um, you know, proactively of that pre-existing relationship, and that when they are um, executing their professional duties as an educator, they have to abide by this policy um, to make sure that there's no appearance of impropriety or appearance of favoritism towards any student they might have a social relationship with. Um, and then member Holloman had, uh, suggested, um, under use of technology that we've, um, craft some language a little bit more specific or pointing people towards the use of those tools that are made available by the district. I think that is an important change here, and there's new language in this section that attempts to capture that. So that people aren't using informal means of communication like social media and text messaging when interacting with students. They're using those things like the Remind app um, that allow us to have an archived copy of that communication. Um, and it also communicates that appropriate adult student boundary, that this is an official communication channel through the district from that, you know, person's position as an employee in the district. Um, it carves out a little bit some exceptions, like when folks are traveling with students, they have to use some of those more informal means. Um, it creates a carve out for that with notification. So, um, I hopefully this version six captures, um, those suggestions of board members and, um, bring it back for overall consideration.
Just a question, the last section of the policy references developing, um, administrative regulations and guidance to further define adult student boundaries, is that do those currently exist in the manual, or is that, that be a new document that's gonna, um, follow if the board adopts this policy?
That would be a new document that would follow adoption of this on as needed basis.
We, I guess, just to just to clarify then, and as needed basis, is will the best word there? We, I guess, just to, just to clarify then, and as-needed basis, is will the best word there? Again, should that be may? Just reading that, I, I assume that to mean that there will be something else coming and if there's not, then I think that could lead to some confusion later. So we change will to may, if that's the intent anyway, I'm trying to go by.
We already have training that we deploy that would link back to this policy, so that does exist.
Okay.
Um, we have protocols for reporting and investigating allegations of boundary violations. The will tied to the very first item on that of developing ARs is the one thing that's, um, yeah. Consideration.
Okay, um. Understood, alright, um, Ms. Sullivan. Number lessons, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate the edits and, um, think that they capture my thoughts, you know, a couple of months ago, uh, very well, thank you so much.
Are there other comments? Number Higgins.
I remember the famous case in nineteen ninety, public relationship, teachers involved with students, I don't think it made with that place rated school district, uh, because I hired a person from the school district, that's why. But I, I'm wondering, has there been any, any, I mean, there, there were statutes say that basically if you've got a deep student relationship regardless of the age of the student, he's got all kind of restrictions, before he's just be sixteen, that was upon him. Is there anything out there, once a, uh, relationship ended, teachers, that they fostered a relationship with their child at nineteen or twenty or something? Teachers, you know, need a lot of, you were, I don't think so, I don't think you would do it, but I was just, I was kind of curious because of what took place in nineteen ninety.
It's been a, a little while since I looked at the, um, you know, the charges that can be brought against somebody for that type of violation. Um, you know, the, the statutory rules around that and, and, uh, so I can't speak specifically to that today.
I think the policy's fine, fine, because it makes reference to fostering a relationship, it's a helping, not personal and all that. And I think that covers it all, I was just kind of curious because I know that that was a major legal issue.
Yeah, but this policy is more an attempt to call out those behaviors that might be boundary blurring and make sure that folks aren't engaging in those because those are, and they're precursors to those more egregious offenses, like you're pointing to. Uh, certainly, certainly an egregious offense like you're talking to is something we would refer to, uh, to A P D immediately for consideration.
Any other questions regarding the version six, Ms. Sullivan?
Just clarification, uh, will we be changing the first word to shall?
Yeah, in the last paragraph, so I guess that was my question for Mr. Lang, do we want to leave this and? I don't object either way, I think the chance for confusion is probably pretty low and the rest of it sounded like it's already in place. If you are comfortable with this language, I'm not going to, um, force it further, just want to flag it.
I'm comfortable with it as written, um, also comfortable if you want to propose a change.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, uh, a stand, my standing understanding that when, um, the administration wants to propose to develop an AR review, so for the board's consideration anyway, so, okay. Alright, um, any objection from the committee to referring this to President Holman for placement on the future board meeting agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we'll consider that disposed of and move on to our next agenda item fifty-one thirty-eight, student possession and use of portable electronics, including cell phones. I think there's multiple attachments on our agenda, including an original copy, some changes, and then the governance version. Member lessons, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wanted to thank everyone for the collaborations that have gotten us this far. Um, I will share that I was invited to provide, um, testimony yesterday on House Bill fifty-seven. And that feels like at least a reasonable thing to bring up at this point in time. Uh, and I've also asked America to, to load the State Board of Education, um, you know, it's about a week old, it's sort of a draft model policy. So I guess that's what's up first. Um, if you look at, uh, if you scroll a little bit farther down, under policy implementation and enforcement, um, you know, what the state board seems to be spelling out is that students are prohibited from accessing devices or wearing device accessories during the school day unless explicitly authorized for classroom use. Devices and accessories must be stored in lockers, backpacks, or as directed by the school district, that's a pretty broad, um, recommended policy. If we could please pivot over to House Bill fifty-seven. Um, those both look like the same. I, well, I can read it, uh, if that's a problem and we can post it later. So essentially, House Bill fifty-seven, as read, uh, across the floor and as discussed in House Labor and Commerce yesterday, has two, two main sections, the first one says that the Department shall, of education, shall develop and adopt a model policy that prohibits the use of non-school issued wireless telecommunications devices in public schools during regular school hours, including lunch and passing periods. Um, the policy may allow an exception for students to use a wireless telecommunications device for emergency purposes. So just, maybe we don't have the right link here. Um, so I'll just keep reading. This, so on one hand, uh, House Bill fifty-seven is written, says the department will make a fairly prohibitive policy. The second section of House Bill fifty-seven is that each school district, and this is where I would see it applying to A S D, shall adopt a policy that prohibits students from possessing or using a non-school issued wireless telecommunications device during regular school hours, including lunch and passing periods. Possessing, as I pointed out to the committee, is a pretty strong word. Um, and, um, I, and, and of course, like, it is also, uh, if, if House Bill fifty-seven were to be passed as written, it would prohibit the access that students ha- may have, um, according to the principal's discretion, um, during those lunch and passing periods. There was definitely some strong, um, interest by the Commissioner of Education in, in maintaining more of a blanket, uh, prohibition during the entire school day. Um, one of the questions that I received from a committee member, uh, was sort of what's the role of local control in all of this? Um, and what I shared with them is kind of the process that, that I, as a board member and as a few, you know, engaged with the administration over the past few months, that other board members have engaged in this, that we discussed it in governance. And I did, as an individual board member, suggest that perhaps the blanket, um, bell-to-bell prohibition, uh, may be hard to implement in the Anchorage School District. I did share, um, part of a spreadsheet with, uh, those members of the committee that A S D administrators have drafted, collecting, you know, what our secondary schools are doing, what's happening at Bartlett is different than what's at East and that's different than what's at Chuyac or Wendler or Romig. Um, so I guess I'm saying all of this because I think it would behoove us as a board, as board members to, to pay attention to what's happening in the legislature. If I were a betting woman, I would say that it's likely some kind of, uh, uh, you know, new bill is probably going to make it across the finish line. Um, I think that there is a lot of interest, uh, a lot of bipartisan interest in maintaining classrooms as, you know, device-free spaces. But I encouraged the legislators in the Labor and Commerce Committee to consider drafting a committee substitute that would look more like what we have put together. Uh, thank you for putting the House Bill fifty-seven. Um, so I really do appreciate the, the version of our policy fifty-one thirty-eight that we have produced thus far and last spoke to in December. And America, if you could please just, uh, bring up the version that I produced for today. Um, I did want to raise a couple of, uh, two items for the committee's consideration. Um, currently, the, the new text that I would suggest, and I spoke to yesterday in the Labor and Commerce Committee, uh, is in bold. Um, you know, currently, we have, uh, with the administration and board member input, sketched out that elementary and middle school students, and I think this aligns very well with State Board of Education and Commissioner and, and legislative intent, are not permitted to access their devices during the school day, um, but could do so before or after four hours. Um, our policy differs from what has been discussed thus far in the committee, um, because it would permit, um, high school students to have their devices during passing periods and at lunch. Um, although later in the policy, I think there's still language that allows a principal to enact stricter practices. Um, but, I mean, before we go down there, America, the one, the, the section in bold that reads, um, the section in bold would essentially allow teachers to direct or request that students use their devices to accomplish a specific academic purpose, which could not otherwise occur with the district provided devices. And this came directly from educators, uh, to me, suggesting that there are times, for example, when a district provided Chromebook just isn't engaging with the district, uh, you know, the local, um, internet system. Um, and students will use their phone as a hotspot. Or a student in a special class, for example, um, student government or yearbook, um, might need to use their device to take pictures, to record things, uh, that are happening around the school. Um, you know, I, I haven't engaged with any advanced math or science classes, but I would be curious about whether for some students, maybe in calculus, um, are they using, you know, apps on their cellphone? I used to have, you know, a fancy graphing calculator thirty years ago. Are they using their cellphones in that way to not have to buy a T I, whatever it is, T I eighty-five? Um, so this is a carve-out that would allow, um, educators to permit students to access their devices for specific purposes. And I actually think that it aligns with an item in what the state board has proposed. Um, America, if you could go back to the state board cellphone draft with your third tab, that one. If you look at lead, item E, is sort of authorized for classroom uses defined as device use explicitly approved, although here it says in writing by the district superintendent or designee, aligned with educational objectives that cannot be achieved using district-owned devices. Students must, you, you must receive clear usage instructions and approvals may be revoked if objectives are unmet or dispositions occurred. So I think I would feel comfortable and would request the board's consideration incorporating that carve-out so that teachers could use, um, their discretion to permit a cellphone if needed, uh, in their classroom. Um, so that is the one edit, uh, that's one of the main edits that I want us to just, the governance committee can consider. And then the second one, America, if you could go back to the Kelly Lessons document? Yes, please, is on the second page. And this is in response to student questions and concerns raised during the Student Advisory Board, uh, meeting in January. Students were concerned about, um, what happens if my, you know, my phone is confiscated? Um, really, the district assumes no responsibility and so I took that to heart and said that administrative regulation, and I, so I suggested adding, I would suggest adding that administrative regulations should be developed to promote the safe storage of confiscated, um, devices. So that's probably going to look different at every school, but perhaps the administration could create a best practices, uh, you know, guideline for schools to abide by for when devices are no longer in student possession. Um, so those are my two suggestions for board consideration at this point in time.
Mr. Goff, what's that?
Um, we, Kelly sent these to us, I think, last week or earlier this week. Um, we had, I had my staff go through these, uh, two changes, the second one is administrative regulation, we have no problem with that. Probably do that anyways, so we agree with that. But the principals and the administration over here is very concerned about the change. Um, allowing teachers to have that ability to, um, make the call in their classrooms, because that's what they do now, um, so it's not really, um, putting another level of, uh, onto the expectation that the students wouldn't be able to use them. The other thing is, one of the examples of using the hotspot because it gets around or we can't able to access district, um, uh, technology that goes to the point of then we're accessing stuff that may not be appropriate in the school and the classroom setting. Um, what we have now, we have filtering, we have, um, our I T department overseeing what is, um, safe for kids and when we start opening up things like this, it just can become a snowball effect. Um, so administration would highly, um, recommend that we don't include that language in the, um, in the new, uh.
Member Higgins.
You know, I'm trying to separate out here whether it needs to be a board policy or as administration can tell people they can't do something. Uh, you know, to, to teach us to do it without a higher level, but, uh, you, you don't see a situation where, you know, this is basically the way it reads right now, high school students are not permitted to access it during class time period, right? I mean, that's really what it says, under no circumstances. And it seems like there would be circumstances where for different classes types that they may want to make exceptions. But this doesn't allow for any exceptions.
So that's the thing that we are hoping that a policy would do is not allow for exceptions. Um, due to the fact that it just snowballs, there's one exception, there's another exception, then a teacher's saying, well, we want kids to relax, so you can put in earbuds. And then that's leaving it up to the educator and then they have educators against each other and that's not something that we want. Um, our schools, our principals would like something coming from the school board that says they cannot use these. And if we're using, um, you know, if they, if the high schoolers can use them during lunch and passing like the original one says, if we think that's enough, um, we do have one-to-one and we do have the abilities for one-to-one and if there are things, then maybe we need to have that come to the, if teachers are saying, hey, my, my lesson cannot be completed without something like this, then they, maybe then they're coming to, um, district administration saying we need to look at this, but at this point, we, our administrators are really wanting us to not have that exception rule.
Um, Ms. Sullivan.
Uh, President Holman has to raise.
President Holman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, um, I, I'm gonna say this, as someone that has worked in a room with thirty-four reasonably fast workstations and a high-speed network with middle school students. Um, the, I was doing that at the time the district implemented the filter to begin with. And for a while, the, just having a filter itself was a little bit controversial. That didn't last too long. Uh, the reality is the, the filter prevents a lot of accidental things from happening, um, as well as a whole host, an unimaginable array of intentional actions by students. Um, so that, that is one of the things we haven't talked about a whole lot, uh, just a student who has a phone has, um, a level of access to the internet that we normally don't allow to happen inside of our buildings. And if we ever actually made that normal, um, the idea of students using their phones as hotspots on other devices, that can immediately be shared, it can spread, um, and really could have some unfortunate consequences in a very short period of time. I wouldn't want that to be normalized at all, it, uh, it's, I can, I can give you specific details, I, I won't go into all that on this particular time. The reality is, as a classroom teacher, you have to be ready for the technology to fail and for the network to fail. It happens, and it's a little more challenging when you're a computer class than maybe just your run-of-the-mill social studies class, as bad as it can be for them as well. But I would not want us to ever suggest that turning private devices as a routine or or a a wild thing. That would just be a step in the wrong direction, I think.
Thank you, Member Holman. A question for Mr. Gustafson about the old language there in the high school paragraph. Is there ever a a situation where there might be a legitimate pre-approved use, or I don't know if it's like a photography class or something like that, is there ever any carve-out if administration knows and it gives a green light ahead of time? Or we're getting away from the creating one loophole that can turn to something much bigger?
You you know, we might have some digital photography things that, you know, we we we've purchased in most of those classes, a lot of cameras and being able to do that, you know. I think that as we're trying to, you know, the overall goal, limiting cell phones, ECBs in the in the school, is getting back to where we're actually teaching and focusing and and not be having that chance of looking at a social media post or looking at a text. And anytime you have a phone out, those are going to happen no matter what. You know, teachers aren't able to look at those and see what they're doing. You know, they can say, you know what, you can take it out, you can use it for this purpose. But at the end of the day, it's not going to be only used for that purpose. And you know, I I think that anything that we we, I think if a policy is made, we go with this policy like this. If there are things that come up, that's something that we put into the AR. This is, there's a policy, and here's the, here's the way in which you go get an exception to the rule for a class that you were teaching. And then maybe we're upper, as district administration is looking at, is there another way rather than a cellphone?
Thank you. Another question. So I think if I'm tracking right, that we're, this policy would allow cellphone use during passing periods. What I I know from fostering dozens of use in a number of district buildings is that passing periods, I hear many grievances in my home, specifically toward, they've asked me to contact the superintendent. Thus far, I have acted as a heat shield for you guys about the length of passing periods. And I'm I'm wondering, you know, practically speaking, as someone who uses a cellphone myself, and I think, you know, cellphone makers are recognizing this, that once you look at a cellphone, it it that is a ten-second ordeal. There's a, oh, wait, this happened, oh, I had to do this. I'm I'm wondering if it's realistic, and 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 maybe we've waited. I mean, how how realistic is passing period use of cell phones allowable? And then two, I what I, my question is to how we were going to decide to do this from a practical standpoint of cellphone restrictions is, you know, there are districts in the lower forty-eight, and I think Pennsylvania made a statewide purchase of sleeves for all the districts provided funding available. Alaska, and I don't think the draft bill has included any such language, even though I hoped it would. So the onus is on us to figure something out to secure those devices. And it seems like if I'm reading the languages, that that's going to be on teachers. Whereas if they're in sleeves, maybe they're a little bit harder to access during passing periods. How are we weighing how we're going to manage the devices that get confiscated? And then is the allowing usage during passing periods realistic? Or are we going to see a spike of tardies and additional activity always in between classes?
I think we're going to have a a learning phase. There'll be a phase there where, you know, we'll be pushing envelope and stuff. If we're, if we're doing sleeves, you know, our 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 schools are open at lunch, we would have to do sleeves before and after lunch. That takes a while. If you haven't been to a concert lately, they do that. At concerts, it takes a while for a good big group of students, eighteen hundred kids coming in the door, eighteen hundred. That becomes an issue. You know, a- as far as tardies and whatnot, we have it now, right? Part of the, one of the things that happens right now is during class time, teacher kids are texting each other, snapping each other. Hey, let's meet at this bathroom, let's meet at that bathroom, got to pass. There's a lot of shenanigans that can occur right now. What we're trying to do is focus during that class period time, have focus beyond instruction and learning, not necessarily on social media. And I think that's the biggest goal behind this. We just, as far as administration goes, we we agree with the whole thing that we've had before. We just have, we have some angst around giving teachers the ability to make exceptions at their at their room level. And that that just, there's some teachers that are just gonna, they're gonna butt up and then against each other, and then some are going to be upset about the whole thing because other teachers are not.
Okay, last quick follow-up, I have just on that thread of conversation. Am I tracking right that the students will be allowed to have them on their person?
Yeah.
Okay, and then if there's a violation, those go to, those cellphones become custody of the educator?
There's, there's, it will be a progressive progressive consequences on that. And that would be written up into the
Okay, I I guess I'm curious, and I mean, from a liability perspective, I I think, and I track that in some cases, it's it's at least been a past practice sporadically that teachers take possession of devices. Is that a concern at all that we're, I mean, at least in the early stages, drawer could become a depository for?
You know, with every teacher does things differently. Most teachers don't want to be responsible for that, and then call security or something if it's going to be one that gets put off further along. That's why, that's why we're in agreement with that set, that back page thing of American, American administrative regulation. We want to set, be able to take some time, get a committee together, because this doesn't go into effect, I don't believe. Do this until next school year, be able to have those in place so the teachers know exactly what they should be doing.
Thank you for giving those questions. Well, Member Higgins, that sounds like we've got someone online.
Yeah, my only question was, with the language the way it is right now, if you decide there needs to be an exception, you have to go back to the board to get the exception for you before. If you want some flexibility, not the teacher, but the administration some level that has to be approved at that level, so it doesn't have to come back as.
That might be nice. We, I think that might be something, that'd be a good idea to put into.
If you can come back to some, how you want to put it, but I just don't want to see it where you don't have that control.
Mr. Sullivan, do you have someone?
Yes, Member Lessons and President Holman.
Good, Member Lessons, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I guess for, I am not on the Governance Committee, but I am certainly aware that we have six of seven board members in person or online. And I, it seems like there can be consensus about keeping the the addition to this draft of the the AR shall be developed. I guess I'd like other board members to sort of, you know, I don't know if people are ready to say thumbs up or thumbs down to the proposed addition. America, could you scroll up to that again, please? And maybe, I just, I'm cognizant that it's noon. So if it's the will of the board to remove that suggested language, then then that, then I'll recognize that's the will of the board or the committee. If there is interest in retaining it, I think that would be good to know as well. But I appreciate the administrative feedback. Although if Mr. Ace is in the room, it'd be nice to hear as well from a teacher perspective.
Okay, and then we have Member Holman?
Yes.
Okay, Member Holman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I have some other comments. I'll wait for a different time. I'm just gonna say I do have to sign off because I do have to come to the Ed Center. So I'll only be on for a few more minutes on this. Thank you.
And so, thank you, Member Holman. So Member Lessons, just a quick question for you then. Is your ask that we finalize this in a way that it goes to a future board agenda without continued conversation in committee? Is that your preference?
Well, I'm just, I'm recognizing we're at the end of the hour, and for, you know, I I think I, you know, if you were to ask me, I I respect the administrative input, but I also recognize that our classrooms and our schools are complex. You know, the example of a hotspot was actually it came up in a conversation saying, actually, you know, a student was trying to connect for purposes of testing, and the computer wasn't working, and so we configured the phone as a hotspot. It wasn't to just roam the internet willy-nilly. So I guess I I see the value in allowing specific language to to allow our educators to be treated as as experts. Although I understand the administrative pushback that, golly, that's a slippery slope. So my personal inclination would be to ask board members to consider incorporating the language. But if it's the will of the board members in this meeting to not have that language, then we can withdraw it at this point in time. But I would like to see this move forward because I think it's timely.
So yeah, I guess my my personal feedback on, I I think that there probably is a universe where, other than I'm going to go to Mr. Ace and Member Higgins, there is a universe where I can think of a reasonable call for building administration and a teacher to collaborate on something a bit more flexible. I I don't know, for me, I I what generates concern when we're talking about that we're using personal devices to mitigate for district technology issues. I don't think that that's the battering ram that breaks down that door for me. My question would be, why, why aren't we engaging with someone to fix that? Is it something with a device that that needs to be repaired? Should we be looking at budget allocations to make sure that our devices are having those issues? It's an older device. I've got a million questions from a from a a board member perspective, and I also am thinking about, you know, the the loophole that that grows bigger in size over time. I've been told by a number of times by my teenagers that they were having trouble accessing, you know, the internet on a district device, and they had to use, you know, a device that didn't have those filters or tracking on it to be found, to find out later that they were hoping to not have their internet usage tracked so that they could do something else besides homework. And so I I I'm worried about adding teacher workload, frankly, but once we open that door, then it's a teacher's responsibility to make sure that they're tracking internet usage when I don't want, I want them to focus on what they do well. And so I feel like there's some middle ground there somewhere. Mr. Ace, sir?
I'll just, Kelly, since you asked, I'll just make two comments. I I think this policy is a little bit of a can of worms. There are times when we get directives that put us in a compromising situation because we want to do what's best for the students, or we feel what's best for the students, and the directive goes against that, so our integrity is put to the test. Do I, anyway, so I think that this policy may find itself doing that at times. And I'll just say, the easy answer, Kelly, is if if we're not allowing them to find an al- alternate means to access the internet versus the ASD system, then then the work doesn't get done that day. I mean, that's the, that's just either the teacher goes to another topic, but generally, it's not nearly at, or it's just, it it could be a lost day or a lost hour of work. So and and if we're willing to, if we're, if that's the cost, that's the cost.
I guess the other other thing I'm thinking about is, you know, is a a point of equal access, right? Not all children are going to have a cellphone with hotspot ability. And so if we're lifting up those students who have that ability and making that accommodation, and others are going to have to go without. I just, I, I, Member Lessons, I appreciate the language and understand the intent. I just, I really take, I have some concerns about using that issue in particular to wedge that language in there. So I would prefer us to to continue working on it, but I'm fine with asking the committee to, or the, I guess consensus from the board, because we have folks present, and we've often operated in that way. If we want to send this forward, I may just work on an amendment in collaboration with Member Lessons to address it at a board meeting. I'm fine with that. Member Higgins, the floor is yours on the last group consensus.
I I agree with the administration mistakes. I know everybody wants to sit down with that, that's okay. You know, they can set rules anyway in addition to this that you can't do it. They, we can't stop them from the phone supervising and directing staff. And by keeping the language the way it's been requested, where they can have an exception, but it's at a higher level, I think it 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 keeps the pressure off the principal, it keeps the pressure off the teacher, and it still gives them some flexibility. We know there's going to be some out there that would be whatever you want versus those that would be very strict. I I I want to support, make it easier for them from an administrative supervision standpoint, because they know. And if you want to say yes, make it an exception that way. I think that's a reasonable.
And is there any objection from the board to moving this forward, recognizing that we likely will recommend as a committee that that language, administration expressed concern about, be peeled back and the rest of it sent forward. And then I I admit, I'm probably going to try to add something else. I just don't know what it is yet. So it's, this isn't the finished product, but we're going to send it forward. Is there any objection? Okay, hearing, seeing none, we'll consider that done, refer this to Member Holman for placement on an agenda. Any other, we're going to, we have two other items, but we won't address those today. We'll hold those over for a future governance meeting. Our next meetings are February thirteen, twenty twenty-five, March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. As we are over time, I'm going to adjourn the committee meeting at twelve oh seven. Thank you.